It is five thirty, so I'll call the meeting to order. Michelle, would you use the roll call?
Steve Heron.
Here.
Carol Hong Kong.
Yeah.
Nicole Jacobs.
Here.
Jean Enra.
Yeah.
Danny Workmeister.
Here.
Here.
All right, if you would please join me in standing to say pledge allegiance. Together, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion for the agenda for this evening.
One second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say aye. Carry. I numbered public forum, opportunity for guests to speak about anything on or off the agenda. If you would make sure guests that you've signed in over on the sheet. And if you would like to say something during this time, if you would please let us know who you are and what your address is. Open it up to public forums. Joel.
I'm looking at your events here.
Name and address.
Joel Mueller, Polina, three fifteen West Graham. Go to the back page. You guys took a bit from an outfit called Quick Attach. The parent's company to Quick Attach is Ershin, which I am the dealer. Ershin treats Quick Attach as a general public provider and as a dealer, I can't do this with my own hand. Can you just pass him down, please? And here's a second bit. Bit number one is exactly like your bit from Quick Attach, but I have to do it with my sloppy handwriting. They don't send it to me where I can type it in. And you'll see that through Quick Attach as a dealer network, we do get better pricing. So on the end of bed, I'm saving you roughly $700 for the exact same machine. Bit number two is if on the bristles of the broom, they put poly slash steel bristles, which do last, last longer. And it's not quite $300 more for the longer lasting bristles. So I just wanted to throw my hat in the ring. And they're all built at the same place. They're basically shipped out of the same area. It's just I don't want to repeat myself. Quick Attach, general public, dealers, we get a better price.
Okay.
So if you consider it great, if you're not, no big deal, I just wanted to throw my hat in.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thanks, Joel.
Thanks.
Joel, what did you say the second one would be? How much less?
The second one is bad. I think it's, I don't know, probably $285 more, I think.
Yeah, $290.
With $290, with the bristles, half bristles, half poly. Because the poly in your cement streets, even though this machine is set up with a dampening system, then you can't force it down too low where the bristles out too soon. The bristles are, or the steel bristles are going to last at least two to three times long.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Joel. Anybody else for the public forum?
You're on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so nobody else for the public forum. We closed the public forum. Item, agenda item number five is the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry. All right, item number six, approval, approved payment of claims. I would entertain a motion to approve the payment of claims and the pre-authorized claims. It's on our action for pre-authorized claims at the last meeting. Somebody will make that motion. Does anybody care to make a motion to approve those claims?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, I assume you are ready to vote on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry. All right. Agenda item number seven, receiving proposal from Jeremy Roer to lease a portion of the old Iowa State Bank building. Jeremy, the floor is yours.
Like, it said it'd bring anything, we didn't know what to bring. But I guess I was just interested, if you would be interested in renting me the, the back little building that was the drive up, not the whole main thing, but just that little brick building. I run kettle corn stand in the summertime and I need, to start off with, I need a place that is halfway climate controlled for storage of a warehouse for sugars and, and other ingredients. From there, I wouldn't mind getting into the possibly popping there. I, I, if I get to the point of retail sale, I'm going to need a location where I can have certified kitchen and pop or, or resell either at, you know, gas stations or grocery stores or even, um, even one of the vendor fairs, I'm going to be supposed to be, I, I'm supposed to be popping on site within my license. So I need a kind of a central location for popping in that aspect. It doesn't make sense to rent the whole building for me right now. That doesn't mean that maybe down the road, I might not expand bigger and be able to, but right now, I was just wondering if I just want to keep around the idea of extension anyway.
Yeah, we're just in the process of determining uses of the building. And that's been on our agenda item for fire department training in, in the main part of the building. And I don't think that's the part of it you're talking about there. Any questions for Jeremy? My, my thought is that, you know, we should get a, you know, a more detailed proposal from you to, to, that we can consider. We could rent one of our insurance agents, et cetera. Determine maybe like food trucks, what's required from a food standpoint, et cetera, so.
When would you like to start doing this?
Well, for the, the, I guess manufacturer popcorn there would be a little while. I don't, I don't have a timeline for that. I mean, I, I don't like to borrow money, so I kind of want to build as I go. But like, if I do, and I actually set off a paperwork, if I do Rice Fest this year, I'm going to need a clean environment to store, you know, almost, oh, what'd I figure, 200 pounds of popcorn, you know, at any given time, as well as the sugars and, and other things that I use in the, and that's in June, I mean, so leading up, I mean, it could be a couple, another month or so. But eventually I'm going to have to start buying product and I thought about adding cotton candy to it too, which that would be enough for the other list of sugar items that I just need a spot for it. It's going to be clean. I, I live on a farm and I don't really have to be an environment.
I kind of agree with the mayor that if you can get us a little bit more of a better proposal to tell us kind of what you're thinking a little bit more, then we can come up with some kind of a rent idea maybe for you too. So can you do that in another, another meeting or so that we kind of can decide? And if you can get it early so that we can see it before the meeting.
I think you should go in also as well and look at it. You know, because it hasn't been occupied for a while, so it's, yeah. You might go in there and be like, never mind, you know, I don't want to, so probably.
Talked to Betty. Thank you. She kind of gave me an idea of what to look back there.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, that'd be a good idea. I think someday if you stop in, Kelly would probably get you. And you stop here at the city office, that works okay with Kelly and he's around. He can show you the place at least and.
Yeah, sounds good. Fun to use it for some things.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good too.
So, yeah. Especially with that open, but people can drive through and grab it.
So much good.
Oh, ideal.
That would be a great idea.
Right.
I'll put something together.
Sure, sounds good.
Again, just stop in the office, talk to Kelly, Michelle, Alex, and they can coordinate that if you.
You might.
If I drop the balls off at the office here, it'll make it to you guys.
Yep. Exactly.
Yep, they move it right on over to us.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for your interest.
Thanks, Jeremy.
All right. Item number eight is a, a resolution to set public, the public hearing for the 15 KB switchgear project for April first here at the city hall as part of our meeting. We refer to this one as switchgear number one. The council approved that last year, but in looking back, no public hearing was held. So we need to actually have a public hearing on that item. So I would entertain a resolution to set a public hearing for the 15 KB switchgear project for April first at the city hall. I'll move that resolution.
Second.
You've got a copy of that resolution 24, to 2024 dash 12, right behind your, in your packet, behind blue flames. Then also in your packet, behind two pages of resolution is that notice of public hearing that we've got in the paper. Any questions on that or discussion?
Question. It's been a while, but four years ago, whatever, but is this a natural progression of things? How it's supposed to happen with public hearings and so on, on this particular project?
On this particular project, this project was started about a year ago.
Okay, so what, what was approved at that point? Just money or?
The, the, everything was approved to, to purchase the equipment of, of the switchgear. So it's, everything was done right. It's just that the council set a public hearing date. Then on that date, they passed the resolution to authorize purchase of the switch, switchgear. But the public hearing did not happen before that authorization to purchase the equipment was made. So that's not the normal course of events.
Yeah, that's what I thought, because you have your public hearing first.
Correct.
So, okay.
That's right.
And it was on the agenda, it just didn't get to the, actually to the public hearing part.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on.
So we're catching up?
We're catching up. And you talked to Tish about it.
Good, I mean, what?
Tish said it was okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
In any of this, Kelly, do you have some of this purchased already? Or not, anything?
I mean, we haven't paid for it, but it's all been purchased.
Oh, nice.
Should be here in May, I think.
Okay, and that's why you haven't paid. Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
And we'll be looking for funding for this, I assume. There wasn't money in the budget.
There was.
There's a million in the budget.
Okay.
This equipment portion was 775, 795.
75, 795.
700.
795.
795, okay. We know we have that covered.
Any other questions or comments, or is I, so you're ready to vote? All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, say aye.
Roll call.
Roll call. So, okay.
Okay, Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hong Kong.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Hi.
Jean Enra.
Hi.
Danny Workmeister.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item number nine is a new item, you know, it's been talked about and it's talked about as part of the switchgear project. That's why it's referred to as switchgear number two. This is the installation, the building installation of that project that the council started just under a year ago. So first of all, I would entertain a resolution to set the public hearing for plans, specifications proposed for contract estimate and, and the taking of bids for fruition such work for April first. Are you interested in making that motion? Do you have information in the packet on that as well? You ready to make that motion?
I will.
Jean, thank you. We have a second.
I'll second it.
All right, open for discussion, questions?
So we're on the right track with this one then? Okay.
We're doing it this right order.
Doing this part of it.
Yeah. Are we going to like look for grants for this?
Yes.
Then we have to change the date of the actual, can't be the first of April, we'd have to change later.
The date of the public hearing?
No, I think you do the public hearing, right? For the first of April, but if we want to look at a grant, we need to go later. And would that make a big deal? As far as?
You're saying we can't, on, on the equipment part, that we got bids. This second part, we haven't gotten bids, have we?
No, we haven't.
So theoretically, we could go for grants since it hasn't been bid. But then we have a timeline issue. Do you want to just talk to that bit?
I mean, if we were going to go for grants, we should have done that when we approved the switchgear. Because now the switchgear is going to be here in May, and if we push it back, then we're going to push back contractors and like that, so.
Because they think they're going to start May?
That's when all the switchgears come in in May.
But we don't have enough money to cover everything of the switchgear, right? I mean, you've got the stuff ordered, but we don't have dollars to cover the actual putting it in and stuff.
No, we took care of all that last meeting. We went over the budget.
Probably the, in the next fiscal budget, which hasn't been approved. That's, I think, the question there. We talked about the dollar amounts, but that budget has not been, we haven't had a public hearing on it, we haven't approved it, et cetera, so that's funny.
Yeah, you're right, Kelly, so.
I mean, this has been going on for, I think October is when we decided to do this. I think we should have been looking for a grant in October, if that's the case. October of.
Actually, I think it was last year in March or April.
Yeah.
So it's actually March of, March of last year.
October is when, October 14 is when, of the previous year is when we gave DGR to go ahead on, to start engineering stuff and whatnot.
October 22, you're saying, right?
Okay.
Is that right? Because, you know, because March of 23 is when the council acted on the purchasing of the switchgear.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so it's.
Since this project started here, October of 22, we should have been looking for grants then, if that was our goal.
So what's that, price tag on switchgear number two?
What's that?
What's the price tag on switchgear number two?
I mean, we got a bid of, I think it was 1.4 million, and we spent 800 getting the switchgear. I can't remember, it was 1.3 or 1.4, so.
I think I found that the other day.
It's the whole project.
Yeah, brought the hassle off. 1.350. Everybody told us back in 22.
And that's coming out of electric fund, is that right?
Okay. So you're feeling we have enough money though to cover it without borrowing anything? That's what I was going to say.
Not necessarily.
So.
One of the, one of the things, and looking back, and we'll talk about a little bit more, under item number 14, discussing grant writer. I'm sorry, not that one, the item number 12. MRES with their report to the council in 2022 recommended that we do a million dollar bond placement in 2024 based on projects like this to fund that, you know, that electric utility fund that gets paid back from the utility rate, you know, buildings and such, so.
And that was when?
That was in May, April of 2022. The, our consultant, our contact from MRES for the city recommended that that happened in 2024.
So with the bond issue though, we can include other projects in that as well, so.
Right.
That's one nice thing about doing a bond issue.
Yep.
What do they charge for interest?
Same.
As a bank?
Yeah.
Probably.
Any bank, wherever you get it from.
And that's another option too, going for, to a bank and get funding as well, so. So we've got some options that we can work on, still work on and.
I just thought if we could get a grant, free money is good.
It is.
Well, we need to be looking at it.
Yeah.
Six, eight months out, if we're going to do that, right?
You can't do that a month before.
No, I know, that's why I said you'd have to wait till at least August to actually do the installation. That won't work. They won't do it then.
Well, your costs are going to go up, right?
Yeah.
If we wait.
Well, are we even guaranteed grants though? Even if we do wait until August, are they guaranteed? So that's, no.
That's the thing about a grant.
That's why we get proactive, put a, one of your five-year plan together with projects and have long lead times.
And we need to do that. Thanks for the info, Kelly.
We'll focus on, on that kind of a project as soon as we get the budget in place for this year.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, discussion on this item? This one also, you have on the backside of the page that we've been looking at for switchgear number one is the resolution for switchgear number two that we are acting on, the notice that this hearing is on the backside of switchgear number one hearing. Note that this, this public hearing for this switchgear number two is April 1st. Switchgear number one was March 4th. Behind us. All right.
Wait, 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 wait.
The first, the first one's.
First day of April.
First also.
Oh, is it?
They're both scheduled for the first.
We, we have another one coming up March 4th, okay, sorry.
And we'll have to do two separate ones for that, correct? Okay. All right.
All right, any other questions, comments, discussion? So you're ready to vote? Michelle, roll call, vote please.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hong Kong.
I want to say aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Hi.
Jean Enra.
Hi.
Danny Workmeister.
Aye.
Four votes is the majority that passes. All right. Thank you. Resolution, alright, agenda item number 10 is a resolution to set a public hearing for the 2024 sanitary lagoon aeration project for the city of Plino. This one is more familiar to you. This is another out of sequence item. It's just more recent. We held the public hearing, the, the council, the last council in early December called the public hearing, we held the public hearing. But the note, the notice wasn't published for that public hearing, nor was a resolution passed. It was just a motion passed. So to clean that up, to have all the, the right process done, we want to have a public hearing for that, go through that process and then pass a resolution for this one. So we entertain a motion for this resolution.
Make a motion for the resolution to set public hearing for the 2024 sanitary sewer lagoon aeration project for the city of hold second.
So with this, we have our project public hearing process figured out. Here, say, we may have these backing up and doing this, right?
So how, how's this playing back, you know, public hearing in, on our meeting on January 16th? How does that all fit together, that?
Well, we held the, the, the council, we, we don't know if it's a valid public hearing or not. Probably isn't a, a valid public hearing.
Okay.
It was, you know, the date was set by the council.
Yep.
But the date happening over the, the year end and the changing councils, the public hearing notice was not published.
Gotcha.
Which is required to have a public hearing on the project as it says.
Okay, thanks.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, so you're ready to vote?
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hong Kong.
Hi.
Nicole Jacobs.
Hi.
Jean Enra.
Hi.
Danny Workmeister.
Aye.
Motion passes with all eyes. Thank you. All right. Agenda item number 12. Is a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the underwritten engagement letter from DA Davidson.
Notice number 11.
Notice 11.
Sorry. Item number 11. Clean sweep pickup room. You have information on that. You have additional updated information from Joel. So I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of clean sweep pickup room, curtain per attachment. And in that motion, you can include source of purchase.
I'd like to, um, I would like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting in light of the new evidence of other, other, uh, I don't want to say that, other provider for this equipment.
I'll second that.
So we technically can't table motion because we don't have a motion on the table yet.
Oh.
But we can table this agenda, or we can defer this agenda item to the next meeting.
But isn't it kind of black and white though, kind of the prices? I mean, we've got a quote here, we've got the quote from, from Joel here. I mean, what really is there to table if we've got the prices in front of us?
True, I just don't know how to handle it.
Sure.
We just wonder if we're doing it right.
This one is just authorizing purchase.
Oh, and it's not.
It's, it's not a.
Picking who it is, or no, that says it.
It says.
What's that? We're, we're approving the purchase of an item.
Ah, it doesn't specifically state though, does it? Who it is.
So we can add or just say.
We can just approve the purchase.
These things.
Okay, okay, and then he can pick from there, or do we have to?
Or we can, or we can do, we can tell them where to do it from as well.
Okay.
So the table laying action is so-called off the table at this point then?
Well, nobody, nobody technically made a motion to change the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve purchase of the pickup room curb sweeper attachment and so on from, uh, I'll make a motion to approve purchase of the pickup room curb sweeper attachment and so on from, uh. Mueller equipment. For. If the steel, whatever he's talking about.
Thirty-six ninety, bid number two.
Seventy-six ninety.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is this for the bid number two, Danny?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had the beeped up.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Any concerns about that?
What's ahead, it's the same thing.
Same thing, but you just have the.
That's right, he's a dealer in town here.
Yeah, we should. It's a premium.
Yes, we should.
Good, any other concerns about that?
You okay with that, Kelly?
All right. No other discussion, I assume we're ready to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All say aye. Big step towards cleaning up our streets. There's a lot of sand out there. Okay.
Can reuse that stuff, right?
Sure.
You get out your, your broom and dust pants.
All right, now we'll move on to, uh, agenda item number twelve. Resolution regarding. Engaging D A Davidson. Would entertain a motion?
I move to approve, resolution to approve and authorize an execution of the underwriting agreement engagement letter from D A Davidson.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
Nicole, did you want to redirect your motion or?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
The committee would like to recommend that we continue to work with D A Davidson and Co. as under, as an underwriter. With this recommendation, as an underwriter, they will be able to look into our debt capacity. If we were to choose do D A Davidson and company as a financial advisor, they cannot be our underwriter. And the city would need to look for another party to complete our financing needs. We feel that we are needing to start taking action on this so we can start moving forward with this project.
So to clarify, your recommendation is that they are not our financial advisors, so they can be our.
Underwriting is what we. Had talked about.
So another return. Here's the dollars included.
Michelle, has D A Davidson said anything about we use them as an underwriter who a good financial advisor would be, or can we rely on them to give us information?
Well. They can do the debt capacity like Nicole said.
Right.
Um. I guess that'd be up to the council if they wanted a financial advisor more than that, but.
Doesn't he just go ahead and check into that?
No, not as an underwriter.
He just goes. He doesn't check who we should go with?
Oh, he might.
That's what I thought he did.
He always place it.
Yeah. Talk to another. Take care of it.
And this, and, um, in that capacity as, as an underwriter is what the city is used to. For before.
We use.
Yes, that's where, when we had our other G O bonds, that's, we used D A Davidson.
Right. Yeah, I think he works with that hours. Does that remember that name always pop up?
Yeah, there's a couple of them, he works with all ours and Cooney is one of them.
Okay.
So, so one question we have, not being really familiar with this, in the engagement letter in the first paragraph, it says that it's concerning potential issues of sewer revenue. Or general obligation bonds. It doesn't mention revenue bonds regarding, related to electric. Which is what we're really looking for also from the. River. Rate study and recommendation to do a, presume that I think that was considered a revenue. Electric related.
I mean, I can, I can have him add that to the, to the letter. At the time, that's what we had asked him for.
I'll see.
Because we were just looking at the lagoon. We already have a revenue bond through, um, that goes against the, the sewer fund.
Do we have to specifically mention what projects we wanted to cover in this agreement letter or? Okay. So we're not limited to what? Okay.
So it seems like we want to add sewer revenue, electric revenue, that maybe just revenue, maybe just.
Revenue bonds.
Sure. Revenue or general obligation bonds. Under three hundred fees and expenses, there, there is a, an initial fee of seventeen fifty, but after that, it says that. As compensation per services and assistance in preparation for official statement, providing various financial analyses and for use of Davidson's capital to advance certain cost burn settlement. So they are providing some level of financial analyses and not necessarily financial advisements.
So what, what's everybody's idea as far as the financial? Advisor, do we need one, not need one, or? Where, staff, what do you think? Don't know, huh?
Gee, thanks.
One of the things I heard, um, D A Davidson, when they did their report, they worked with Sheldon's own, they did the report to the council there. They, they, they do like they did here, check into what are, what your debt limit is and where you're at with that. They also made recommendations to them, and I presume it's the same position as what they're doing with us, making an assumption.
Right.
Of saying, you know, what they feel is too high of a debt limit, you know, what your, what your debt capacity should be not to exceed, et cetera. So I think we get those types of. Expertise out of them.
Is, is that enough for us in our current situation?
I think I sent, that I, that I sent you an email with the debt capacity.
Yeah.
What we're currently at right now.
And that, what's that number, I didn't get a chance to.
For what one, for what, um?
Debt limit.
This one is our debt capacity is two point nine, currently we're at. Two point nine nine is our debt capacity, our current outstanding G O bonds is nine hundred and twenty thousand.
So I got two.
And, and they said the revenue bond that's attached to sewer, hundred and thirty-four thousand doesn't go towards it, since that's, that's in one of your proprietary. Paying it back via, via revenue of that utility, that's not even entered in there. So we're at nine twenty of a two point nine nine million.
Okay. So I'll go back to my original question, do we even need to consider a financial advisor at this point, or we gotta get enough information from D A Davidson, or?
I would, I would think we don't need a financial advisor at this point in time, we, we would want to keep that in mind, I would say, as we go down the road. See once, if we later need that.
Right. Well, my, part of my thought is if we, if we're gonna do a one, three, five, ten-year plan or whatever, that. That person or that firm may be coming pretty handy as far as a financial advisor is concerned in funding projects and that type of thing, so.
Maybe start out with a year and see how it rolls, Jenny?
As we get, you know.
I hope it keeps rolling.
Yeah, get, get three to six months, you know, get through the budget process and when we start the capital budget plan, you know, I mean, the, the extended capital plan. Then have that be one of our items that we want to discuss, see which kind of advice. Okay, any other questions, discussion on engaging D A Davidson? Is there any right there? Hearing, now I assume you're ready to vote.
Steve Heron.
Hi.
Carol Hong Kong.
Hi.
Nicole Jacobs.
Hi.
Jean Enrau.
Hi.
Danny Workmeister.
Hi.
All right. Item number thirteen is ongoing hearing, um, budget information, I think Michelle passed out some additional budget information. She should have, she's gonna go through with this. Michelle, turn it over to you.
Um, everything in red, which is quite a bit, are things that I have questions on and I have, um. Contacted a couple people to offer some assistance since this is my first go around at this.
So basically, this is our first look at your revenue stretch, right?
Yes.
The first column is the budgeted year submissions, the second column is to compare it to for the prior year, right?
First column is what we are.
What you're proposing.
Yes, yeah, and second column is current.
I thought he had something for those library receipts, he did have a couple of them filled out, but he had the one, I thought. What didn't you think?
I have it in there.
Oh, you do have it in here, okay.
Yep. What you're looking for is what the bounty contribution is to. Total revenues are down. Sixty thousand, where is that? I'm just looking at total, the seven hundred and two thousand total revenues from the current fiscal year to the six forty-six. Of the upcoming, I guess one of it is reimbursements. Next twenty thousand.
You know, these, the ones.
Sales of assets.
The second column, those were just estimates too. And like, um. Those reimbursements of the forty thousand on the current budget were nowhere near that. And the sale of assets of forty thousand on the current budget were nowhere near that.
Sure, okay. That explains it. So you're still working on the, understanding the transfers in, so we'll hold off on the transfers. We discuss those later.
It looks like we just, the current budget, we stood the same as the year before. And the year before.
Yeah.
And the year before.
And if, and if those are accurate, that's good.
Yes.
Okay, so you can page, the third page, employee benefits fund at the top.
Okay. I just need more clarification on what our, um. Actual cash balances there. And available for expenditures.
Page of the TIF fund is at the top.
Yep.
So your one forty-two property tax isn't in red, up from last year's estimate, is that the number that year?
Yeah, I mean.
What's better?
It is. I'll be anxious to see all these things. In a, in a final budget format and.
She sends it to the county.
Exactly.
And then when you hear from them.
What I ask Michelle to do is just give us an initial look and visibility to these, I think probably in pastures, as I've talked to people, a lot of these things. You haven't seen until everything was done and finalized and in front of you, along with all the revenues and expenditures, so.
I see both, uh, water and. Sewer. Are down for next year, is that just a trend or? Or is that because the estimated twenty-three, twenty-four is just estimated, yeah?
It's a little high, yeah.
Okay. So they're closer number than the way it's reflected on the report?
Right.
Okay.
And even my, even my numbers are estimates.
Right.
You know, I would, we're in the eighth month of the fiscal year, so. I would, um, calculate or divide the number by eight and then times it by twelve and. Kind of get a rough estimate of where we'd be at the end of the current budget.
See, on electric utility down from an estimated million two ninety down to a million forty-three. But if you look at the metered sales of electricity are estimated for this current year. Looks pretty high in comparison to what the prior year estimates were. So that would be part of the reason why that's down. As Michelle mentioned, you know, this week she's working, it was another city clerk, right?
Yes.
Another city clerk and. Also another resource to help through this process, this being her first year process, combined with the state changing the whole budgeting process very significantly this year. Uh, on what they're doing, so. I think you'll see some, you know, good progress on that yet this week. What I'd like to do is have one more special meeting next week. If, if the council's agreeable to that as a work session. Well, we, the, the timeline that we're faced with here shortly, as we've been talking about, is our next regular council meeting is two weeks from last night, March fourth. March fifth is the, the county and state's requested date that Michelle have all of this information submitted and put into the system. That gives them from March fifth through March twentieth to pull together their new reporting that they're mailing out to every resident, every taxpayer. So while stat, according to statute, we really have until March fifteenth, they are really putting pressure on cities to meet or come very close to that March fifth date. So with what has to be inputted into there, and then from that, that's the information that we'll have a budget public hearing on with our, um, city residents. So. With the progress that Michelle makes this week and having that information in. I'd like to have one more. Budget special working session, just to go through and review what she's got, answer, help her answer any final questions. If you're okay with that. Michelle, what, if you have a preferred date on that? We could do another Monday night, I told her we could do Wednesday because that's kind of a free day this year, that's an eat day. If it gets too late in the week, it doesn't do us a lot of good because there's not much time between later in the week and our Monday, March fourth meeting, so I'm doing the first half of the week.
I'm good with Monday.
I'm good with Monday.
As far as I know, I am.
Guys?
You guys good with that?
Yes.
They set a special meeting for Monday. So it'll be a budget working session.
We're gonna go five thirty again?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
We'll get that noticed this week. Okay, any other questions or comments from Michelle? Direction. There are a lot of reasons going to be there.
What we gonna?
All right, Michelle, anything else that you need from us? Okay. All right, item number fourteen. Is discuss hiring a grant writer. That topic keeps coming up. We need to figure out if we're gonna do that, be, get proactive on grants. And I think you, the finance committee, Danny and both have talked a little bit about that. Any thoughts? That you would like us to, this isn't to act on, this is just to have the initial discussion.
Yes.
I just think there's a lot of grants out there that we're missing the opportunity. And I think that if we get someone that, um, what they feel, you know, the privy to all of those, I think that would benefit us in the long run.
Where do, where do you start though? I don't even know if we would contact on a grant.
Well, the one that was used before was, I think, um, the guy in Spencer.
The Northwest Iowa development, planning development.
Darren. He does them.
They do them, and I think he knows, I talked briefly with them and they, they also know some other people. I don't know if they specialize in every type of grant, but you know, he's a good resource, has been a resource to the city that if he, if he finds a, a better source to go after a particular type of grant.
Right. He's been in it long enough.
That was my other question. They specialize in areas, right?
He does those ones, you know, that we kind of talked about earlier that we couldn't do anymore for the lagoon.
Right.
So that's like a half a mill that he works with, but whether he works with a lot of the other ones, I didn't ask him.
Is that the, Kelly, is that the email that we receive from with like three hundred dollar upfront? Or zero, zero dollars for, to do so much work or something? Is that on our water project? Did that come from D and J, D?
I think so.
Okay. Didn't he mention something in that correspondence?
Yeah, I'd have to look at the email again.
Yeah. Yeah, anyway.
The big thing with this gen item was to just get some discussion and just make sure before people go through a lot of work and figure out, you know, and come back with a proposal to hire a grant writer that we're on board with the concept of hiring a grant writer. Because sometimes some councils, and I think this council in the past is like, when you look at the dollars, it's like, oh, we can do that ourselves, but we know we don't have the expertise to do it ourselves, so.
Or the time.
Yeah, they're very picky whenever you do grants. You have to make sure that it's perfect.
Yes. But I think there's a great idea, you could say we're missing how to do before you could even get the grant submitted. So.
So if we want to pursue that, um, any suggestions on how and who takes the lead on that project? Michelle, in this office, probably isn't gonna have a lot of time in the next few weeks to take the lead on that.
I can call the gentleman from Spencer. Again, I've talked to him on different things and see once how many grants or what he, maybe get a background of what he's done, what he, so what he can give us.
Get a proposal started.
And get a dollar amount, what he, what he could guide us into the direction of, right, someone. His bus is closed.
So you'll, you'll contact, interview IPDC.
We probably could contact back in DGR too, right? See, I mean, they've got a man involved in this grant writing, I would think.
It's their engineers and they knew, I think that your engineer sent us a note on that anyhow through you. We got an email. Different things you go through.
So that's something that you could contact back in DGR and just have them send this information on grants and how to go about it? Great.
Now, I do have a question about grants though. I know Glenda had talked about the poet grant that's coming up in April that we can apply for. I think that's fifteen hundred dollars. Um, so how do we, if we're applying for a grant like that, how do we designate where that's going?
I think they tell you what they're gonna give you the grant for. Okay. I don't think it's just an open grant.
Okay, so like if, I know Steve and I, we had talked about maybe doing some stuff for, um, the parks and, and all of that, you know, how do we just?
Poet, I suppose you'd have to, but I thought hers was more like, um, beautification and stuff, so whether it would be trees and bushes and, I don't remember all what she said. But I think you can contact poet and I asked him there and they can probably manage or somebody could send us something.
I didn't know. I'm just saying poet as an example. I'm sure there's other ones too that, how do you, how do you decipher where it's gonna go?
Right.
If you put in multiple things.
I gave you that card from the gal, Brimgar that says works with, um, I think I gave it to Kelly too for, um, equipping the park.
Ground.
Then there's a good place to get it from.
Yeah, seems a lot, a lot of the small ones are gonna be for first impressions, vitification, parks, trees, et cetera. So that probably, most of those are probably gonna fall under parks and property. Just live Stephen and Nicole, so.
Should be good for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good deal.
Take the lead on that as far as it goes. So to show you your causes of your committees, if you're gonna take the lead on this.
I don't want to be greedy.
Pass it out. You're gonna hand it all to Stephen. Yep.
I want to talk about that.
All right, sounds good. All right, gen item number fifteen. See bank rep journals. Do you want any update on that, Michelle?
It's going fairly well, so.
So, so the key thing now would be, and I don't think you've had a chance to think about the, the treasurer's report. That's one of the things we want to appoint a treasurer as soon as we can. So if we can, you know, take one of, take one of these months to the treasurer report level, just as a practice for ourselves. Again, then going forward, I'd like our standard to be our monthly treasurer reports. It would be ready to bill by the second meeting of the month following the month. First is a little too quick, but the second, so.
And you feel, Michelle, that you can do a budget report now, since you've kind of updated the budget from this past year and do a, you know, or we could see what's been spent so far, you know, maybe by next month. I don't know if that would be too fast for you or something. Okay. Just print one of those out.
Yeah, both of those probably be in the same time frame, the second meeting of the month for a year day budget actual report.
Well, I don't know that we need the budget one every month, but maybe at least every quarter, unless there's something big.
I think we should look at it, starters every month, get familiar with it.
There's a couple of other things that they used to do too. I'm gonna look it up. Maybe you know already do. Because it was a bunch of work. There was another.
Be good, because it's kind of our number one responsibility to help and manage the finances of the city, so we shouldn't see a lot of financial information.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, thanks, Michelle. Reports. Under my report, it's kind of all about the, you know, Michelle's doing, doing the budget. She's carrying the load of that. Mine is just making sure that we do the things that we have to do by the time we have to do them. And, you know, a lot, a lot of learning of, of the process and, you know, like, as we found out with public hearings. Just educating all of us on the right way to do all these things, so. It's been key. Keep meeting with a number of people. Police chief Nate and I met recently, so he could educate me, policing and polina, those types of things, so. That's really all I have. Kelly, you have anything else to print in?
We've been working on pot hole on around the school. ECA said they might be able to get here in the next week or two to do some borings, so it's been the main focus lately.
Ross, Ross is now the grounder, doesn't it? Those boring operations, uh.
Yeah, there's, there's not much for us to be grown.
Yay.
Thanks for all your project, district work, et cetera. One of the things I was gonna ask is if we could turn down the sander a little bit to not put quite so much sand on the streets. Reverse the down off and then there's too much.
For that new machine.
The new machine's only about this wide and we got a lot of street surface to do. Hopefully that works so, so well that Kelly's gonna want to get a second on that.
One for two, each, two guys get to run.
Yeah. Yep. All right, Michelle, anything else?
No.
No? Michelle had jury duty and she put in her day and she got released, so that's awesome. That was a day.
You do say you've been here. That's what Dave did. Took you high. Yep, took you right off.
All right. Any other council members have anything you want to bring up? Everybody let's get out of here and go watch the ball, boys' ball, basketball game.
Yeah, when does that start? It's not even starting.
Seven o'clock in Cherokee.
Yep.
All right, any committees? Any reports? Nate, please. Sounds good. Thank you. Fire Rich.
Are we good for Monday's training and banking?
What's that?
Are we good for training and banking Monday?
Yes, the insurance guy is okay.
Okay.
Now, Chamber still has stuff in there.
What is that?
I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, nothing can really get ruined, but if you need us to move something, okay.
How many is it a lot of this stuff in there?
Christmas trees.
Something.
Yeah.
Good search and rescue obstacles.
There you go.
Can't guarantee they won't be search and rescue tender room of them, but.
We can't start fires. Okay.
So that stuff would eventually get transferred to the?
Well, we had asked, I think it was, I don't even remember. It was, I think it was in December. It was before we got on, um, if we could leave it there because we're wanting to use it, um, in the future. Um, and they said that was fine.
So that's fine until we had some other use.
Yep, yeah.
And you guys still have stuff in the voice chat building too?
Okay, yeah, and that's what we do. The chamber does lease that from the city.
Yep. For that, I knew you were supposed to be, or I thought you still were.
Yeah.
All right. Ambulance, nobody's here for the ambulance. Matt, library.
Come our board net, um, as per regular. The one thing I mentioned last month was just some legislative things that might be going through. Apparently, they didn't get through, so it was a non thing. So I think it wouldn't have impacted us too much, but it's good to have that on and out of the way. And yes, we're just preparing for our summer planning. Um, and, uh, this is our year to prep for our reaccreditation as libraries, so we're starting to gear up on the outlook plans and different things and maintaining our standards.
When is your certification today?
So technically it's twenty five, but we have to have most of it done by the end of this year.
Okay.
So it's just, we do survey and we, yeah, review all the standards and try and meet all the categories and.
Okay. And your next meeting is the fourteenth, did I see?
Yes.
One o'clock?
Yes.
Thanks. And airport, let's hear our airport committee. Jean and Denny currently, right? I mean, you guys haven't met, as, as far as I know, we should probably, I'd like to meet with you and just do some brainstorming and say whatever we're gonna do with it.
Yeah.
Unless you want to do that on your own and come back, I'd be glad to meet as well, so.
Whatever.
Yeah.
I'm playing with that.
If you guys would kind of decide, you know, pick a time that works for you and let me know.
What about, uh, four thirty before our five thirty meeting?
Yeah.
Hour, hour out of catch it, should never.
You wanna come here then?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure.
Good.
Four thirty on Monday.
As you all know, we don't have an airport director, so we can get on that and put a plan in, shoot in place. All right.
I just wanted to add, could that, to add to Nate's, that we had met with a potential candidate and talked about, you know, relocating and several other things, and we kind of like to maybe see him take a psych exam before we.
Which is one of those things.
I know Nate had kind of mentioned that.
In the process.
Yeah.
Does, do you help with that, Michelle, or did you get it from that guy, or do you do it?
No, you have to be a certain certified proctor and the closest proctor is Sheriff Devote.
Oh, he did, so, okay. I didn't know that in Europe.
Yeah. So this particular candidate doesn't have any, um, law enforcement training, you know, so it would be kind of something to think about. It would be sending them to the Iowa, the law enforcement academy.
Yeah, and Nate had said maybe not until the fall.
Right.
Which is, there, there's one, the soonest one, I think, is April twenty ninth, the start of summer, but it's a four month process.
He said fourteen weeks, I know.
Yeah.
I think it might.
Camp Dodge, he said.
Yeah, that would just outside of, well, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Checked into, to wit, wit has training, but that's only for people that have a BA, which this candidate has, but also has a certain number of hours of criminal justice education already. Then, then wit can finally finish it out.
I see, okay.
Has to be a degree.
Like criminal, criminal justice degree. No, he doesn't at all. No, he would have a bachelor, but no, he doesn't have criminal justice. That's right. So start checking into that, so.
Secondary education.
Yep. Yeah, so that continues. Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, I retain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say goodbye, or say nay?
Aye.
Both saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned at?
Six thirty six.
Six thirty six. Thank you all.